Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
The roll please.
MacIver.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Vaughn. Belzak.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
Shower.
Clistic.
Here.
Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. And since we have a very limited audience, I would imagine that there are no questions or comments. Nancy Urban's in the audience. She'll be speaking to us under the mayor's report in a short period of time. Any questions and comments and announcements from the alderman? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One quick question. I heard rumor that Stergenics is trying to reopen again with the Illinois EPA or trying to come with some deal to reopen. Is that something like Brian could just take a quick look into? With regards to the seal order, that they're trying to negotiate something to open back up?
Well, I heard they were negotiating, but I didn't hear that it was to open back up again.
No, I think there, I think.
Or for some clarification there.
Judge mandated some kind of settlement conference, but nothing to the effect, you know, I watched the Willbrook, last Village Willbrook meeting, somebody had a similar question, and they were not aware of anything. And we're not, because we're not, we're not yet really been approved as part of the law, so we have never, they've never heard. I forget the term, Mayor.
Our motion to intervene.
To intervene, yes. They haven't done that yet.
Okay.
We were asked to hold back on that, yes.
Yeah, I heard it was something the judge ordered. I don't remember now if I just saw that on the Stab Stergenics site. But nothing I've heard. I believe at this point, that's just all rumors, yes.
Okay.
I will check with our attorney, though, just to see what.
Any other, anything else from the alderman? Then let's move on to the approval of the minutes of April 1st, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak? Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Epstein.
Clistic.
Aye.
Four ayes, two absent, and one abstention.
The minutes have been approved. Let's move to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did receive a couple of emails from residents regarding the trash blowing around the neighborhood. And that's been shared with Brian. This past Friday, we had high winds and there was kind of a discussion about, you know, maybe the next time the garbage goes out, to consider that all containers have covers. You know, the biggest problem is the open containers for the recycling. I know even I was driving through Farmingdale Village, and there was like, actually like glass bottles rolling across because entire, you know, containers were tipped over. So, just something to consider, you know, going forward.
Well, we never mandated that. You know, people voluntarily signed up to get the containers from the carrier.
Yeah, but I think you don't, you know, you could just get your own garbage can that has a top for recycling. I don't think you have to necessarily use theirs, you know, just market recycling. But that might be something to consider going forward in the future.
I reached out to Advance, just to see what options are available. The small blue rectangular, years ago, there was a lid they developed for that. It wasn't, it didn't work very well. And I haven't seen lids for those for a long time.
I've never seen one.
You know, in talking with Advance, maybe there'll be some other options.
Yeah, because people are still using those containers that we started out with.
Yeah. I know we got rid of ours when we got the new rolling container for the recycling, but.
Yeah, there are, I mean, you are able to use alternate, alternate containers, as long as they're marked with, it's free. You just mark recycling, so the driver knows.
Right, right. So that, you know, that just might be something to, you know, maybe the ordinance changes for the trash in general.
Well, when is our next contract negotiations up?
We have your.
Two more years.
Yeah, I mean, we could still talk to them about options. We do, our ordinance now does really require that you don't put up recycling, so it's blowing all over. But it's just not practical, because not everybody has that, and there's not a great lid for that. And, you know, absent putting a big rock or something like that on those rectangular, there was, you know, they're just, they're just not good for, you know, preventing the blowing around.
Yeah, I think originally, they were kind of for glass and cans, so there were heavy items in there. Now, there's so much other stuff in there that, you know, the plastic and the paper. So, I think that kind of the use has changed in terms of what goes into the recycling bins, so.
You can get a thirty, I got a big thirty gallon. I picked up at Home Depot that says recycling on it and does have a lid.
Yeah, so.
You can, can pick them up separately if you want to.
The small one, the rectangular one blew away. Nobody ever brought it back. None of my neighbors ever brought it back. So I ended up going out and buying a toter myself, you know, a small one.
I've got an extra one to sell. You want to buy it?
We do have to check, you know, and probably get some specs from the hauler. Like, your can is probably acceptable. But obviously, if we had three thousand special recycling cans, and they were hard to get the lid off and different things. So we'll just want to work with the hauler.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Because there is, there is a difference between the carts, so like you have, where the machine picks them up versus cans that they actually have to lift and weights and all that.
But they have to lift those bins.
The bins they have to, yeah, but if there's something a little bigger.
Right, bigger, it's heavier, right.
Yeah, I got a regular, regular thirty gallons you just roll out there, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, something to consider going forward, because it seems like this is, we've had some high winds of late. And I think it's just going to get windier.
It happens every year. They don't knock it away until there's, you know, lids on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
Along the same lines, Mayor. Donna Silkup on 71st Street, 600 block. You know, trash cans in front of the houses, said that she doesn't think this ordinance is going to work. Either enforce it or remove it. But I did tell her, you know, what are, what are doing right now as far as going through town and kind of checking on the different things that he ordnance. So I told her to be patient, so hopefully that works out.
Well, you know, that large container that we have up in the hallway. When I saw the size of it, I thought, holy cow, somebody's going to put that in their front, in front of their garage to hold all of their, their trash containers?
Smaller version.
It is a smaller version, too, though.
Thank God for that, because that thing is a monstrous thing. I can't even picture that in somebody's home.
How much smaller, Dan? Do you recall, you know, lengthwise? Is it the minimis, really, or is it?
It's still probably going to be insignificant by a couple.
People are not going to be able to use one, one portion of their garage to pull into, because.
They already can't use a portion of their garage, just it's.
That's part of the theory now, that their garage is so filled, and that's why they don't keep their containers in there. So that might, that might actually not be an issue for some of them, if they aren't using their garage now and have it filled with things. But it is big, you know, if you go out in.
Well, yeah, well, it's going to, it's going to cover half the garage door.
Nah, I mean, being in the setting that it's in, I think makes it look a lot larger than it really is. So if you were to go and lay it out, for example, in front of your garage, you'd see it's not really as large as the perception is.
Okay.
It'll block one car, the one in two-car garage.
That's what I'm thinking. It's going to definitely do that.
You have a wing wall. The wing walls are typically two to three feet in depth. So, and I believe that's thirty-six inches deep right there.
So you're imagining someone to move out that container to be parallel to the wing wall? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, but the top.
And then take up a portion of their garage, in front of their garage?
Yeah, it's just, really, it shouldn't take up a lot in, from the garage door. You know, a foot, I would say a foot, maybe a foot and a half at best.
For some of these people, though, that have the elevated side to the house and don't have that wing wall, it is going to take up more of the front.
Yeah.
It will.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, any other, Alderman Clistic?
Sorry, one more time. For Chief Thomas, I had a couple of comments with regards to speeders on Nantucket and 79th. A few people speeding through as a shortcut from seventy-five, Seventy-Fifth Street to Seventy-Ninth. So if it's just an opportunity for a few patrols, just to keep an eye out on there. More, happens more often from residents I've spoken to between, you know, evening and morning. Usually other than that, not too many issues. So, morning rush hour and the evening rush hour coming back home, so.
Any other communications to share? Then let's move on to the mayor's report, and I'd like to have Nancy Urban come up. She's with the, she's organized and started the Darian Arts Council, and she wants to bring, apprise us of what's happening.
Hi, I think I've seen all of you before. I can't remember all your names. I was here in June, July, I think it was July, talking about what we wanted to do. And first, let me say, I'm going to read this, because last time I didn't read and I was all flunked. So first, let me say thank you to Mayor Weaver for your support of our project. For, from our initial meeting last June up until today, we had met on one of the talk with the mayor's nights. Your help has been invaluable. Just knowing we have your support has been great, and we wish you well. That being said, Mr. Marquesi, we, I've seen you ballroom dance. I've seen you do it. I've seen you dance. And we're hoping to have a great working relationship with you, maybe get you coming out and dancing at some of our events.
I'll ballroom dance with you anytime.
I tried to get my husband to take it, but he won't do it. Since last June, we have accomplished a lot. We've had several meetings with a lot of different people attending. We were able to find an attorney willing to help us get the paperwork filed and completed for our nonprofit status. And I'm happy to inform you that as of February 11th, 2019, we're a fully recognized 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. I won't lie and tell you, if I had to do it, it would still be getting done. The paperwork on that is crazy. The attorney, great help. We had a couple fundraisers. We had a small Five Below fundraiser last holiday season. Taekwondo USA, Karate for Kids held self-defense seminars for us. And we also had a fundraiser this past weekend at Five Below. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Kenny was so generous to donate the $500 to our project. We thank you. Because of your donation, we were able to pay for the filing fees for the corporation, the tax-exempt status. And frankly, we wouldn't have our certification right now if it weren't for you. So, thank you. We will always be grateful for that. We have been in contact with Rob from Gift of Carl, and he's helped enormously, given us great advice and everything like that. I've got Kelly Kirfan with me. She is the vice president. I am the president. I like the sound of that a little bit sometimes, until I look at the work I'm having to do. But Kelly has been, been along since the beginning. What's coming up? At the end of the month, we have auditions for our children's musical review, a night of Broadway. Show will be presented June 7th and 8th at Kingswood Academy. They have been generous to allow us the use of their stage for a very minimal fee. All of the proceeds from the signups, ticket sales, concessions, everything go directly to the Darian Arts Council. We are a recognized charity on Amazon Smile. If you don't know what that is, Amazon donates a portion of your purchase to a charity of your choice at no cost to you. It's a great program, and I think we've gotten quite a few to sign up for it so far. So we had a lot planned for the summer, so just kind of keep an eye out for that. Our website will be up pretty soon. With that being said, there's an area that I have to bring up a little bit. We were very fortunate to have Patty Barnum from Taekwondo USA help us find an attorney. We could not find an attorney in Darien to help us. We went to Burbank to get an attorney. He was, he was great. He has, his name is Mr. Hurst. From what I understand, we are going to be migrating to an attorney in Darien. Kate is not here right now, and she has all that information. Once everything is completed. We have a couple pieces of paperwork left to do, and our, his help will be, he, he was great. He, the only thing charged was the fees, and he fronted all of those fees for us until we were able to set up our bank account, blah, 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 so that we could pay him back. And he is paid in full. Our other issue has been with space, which we knew would be, would be an issue. Our first inclination for any kind of events we wanted, rehearsals, performances, anything like that, was to go to the schools. Okay? On average, to use the space for two to three hours, whether it was a rehearsal or a show, the cost was $150 to $175 a night. That's, you know, Eisenhower Cast, Lakeview, Hinsdale South, and that's, that's pretty cost prohibitive to us. I, I wouldn't have thought that would work. It frustrated us, because we, we want to help the schools. We want to be supportive of the schools, but they, they weren't budging on it. They were saying, that's what it is. And some of the, some of the schools just said, no, we can't help you at all. And so what I did is I sent emails off to the Board of Education, said, hey, get in front of the Board of Education, talk to them, and say, we'd like to partner with you. We want to support the arts and the schools. We, you know, help us out here. And I haven't heard anything back, but I think we're at a little transitional time here. So I'm going to wait on that a little bit more, and maybe send a couple more emails out a little bit later. I don't know the people. I don't, I probably maybe run into people on the board in Jewel or something like that. But I, I don't know who they are, so as I become more familiar with whoever's on the board, I'll be able to do a little bit more. Hey, help us out a little bit here. Although the funny thing is, is that with the auditions for the kids' show, I sent it off to all the schools. And they were fantastic about getting that out to all of the kids. I mean, I've been hearing that it's been in all the schools, all their packets, their digital backpacks. So it might be just a communication thing in terms of they don't really know what we do. And it also might be that when we were talking about renting or reserving their spaces, that we weren't a nonprofit at the time. We were just here. So, yeah, well, we're going to work on that. The last thing, our last meeting, we determined that we wanted to start giving back to the community, because the community as a whole has been pretty supportive of what we're doing. So we want to explore options of partnering with hopefully like the Lions Rotary, the Police Officers, Chamber of Commerce, the Women's Club, Garden Club, and all the schools and organizations to see how we can help their groups as well, kind of do some partnering thing, maybe just help out at some events. And so we're looking at that. That was from our last meeting that we had. We've got sponsorship sheets, brochures out and everything like that, and we are well on our way. We've, we've accomplished a lot. We, we had a lot that we wanted to accomplish that we didn't. But, you know, what you do is what you do. That's what we've been up to for 10 months. You can look for our kids' thing coming up. And then the summer, we're looking at a cabaret with adults, Mr. Kenny. And there's also an adult play.
That, that, schools used to do the, what organizations used to do cabarets?
All the time, remember?
The Madrigals. You should have the Madrigals.
No, it was the adults, it was the parents of the students that did, did the shows. And they were fundraisers at the schools. Oh, my gosh. I'm trying to remember what they were called. I think they were called Cabaret.
We were, we were trying, Brian, you saw, we were trying to do the, the one at Papa Pacero's, but we had, we had to postpone it. We had some issues that we couldn't overcome with that. But that seems to be one of the things at our meetings that people really want to do, is cabaret. So we're looking at that, and we have been frugal muse. The gentleman that owns that, he's a playwright, and he has written a couple plays, and thinking about taking a look at his plays and seeing what we can do with that. Our goal with all our fundraising for the kids' show and with the summer is to be able to get the rights for Into the Woods Junior for, for a kids' production in the fall. It's doable. We, and I, I'm confident we'll be able to afford that. But we started, we started with nothing, and to think that, oh, you know, this is where we are, and it's only been 10 months. I thought it would take longer to get the nonprofit. It didn't, because we had the attorney. It'd still be happening if it were me, because that, I went to go do the like nonprofit for dummies thing, and no, that wasn't going to happen. But that's where we're at, so.
It sounds like you've accomplished a lot, Nancy.
We have, we have. Yep, we have, and we're, we're going to keep going.
I'm very happy that Kingswood Academy stepped up and is allowing you to, because that's the old Marion Hills School. So they do have a stage.
Well, I'm also, I'm directing their musical there. That was the new thing for this. They lost their person that did it. And I just was like, well, you know, help us out. And they were, they were fine. It's a cute little stage.
Nancy, Nancy, the, you have administrations, you're going to have a new superintendent in '61 at the end of this year. You have new board members going on '61. You have new board members going on '86. I don't know about '63. When that changes, we could put you in touch with those people.
Okay.
And possibly have you meet them. I guess the question I would ask you is, the Fred Astaire Studios does a dance performance at Darien Fest. And they do that just to introduce, he uses that as a publicity for his own studio. Could you guys do, maybe do something at Darien Fest on a Saturday afternoon? You know, if they gave you an hour, or they gave you a half hour, just introduce your program, have the kids up there, maybe do an act or something from a play or something like that.
That's definitely possible. We weren't at that point last Darien Fest, just starting out and stuff. And that was something, because we, you know, we saw you up there, and we were like, well, I think we could probably put together something like that. But we don't know what the dates are for the Darien Fest.
It's in August this year.
Okay, okay.
It's towards the, yeah, end of August.
It's the, actually, it's the second weekend in August, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in August. And I guess you may want to contact April.
April Cadlec is the president of the.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so when do the, when do the boards switch over? When, when do the new people come in?
Probably May 6th, like ours. I'm sure that.
Eighty-sixth board is the 24th.
Okay.
That's what Bill Carpenter was telling me. He's going off the board. Yeah, they're early. They're, I think they have three new board members coming on. Bill's going off. I don't know who else is going off. I know '61's got at least one new person. I'm not sure if they have any more than.
Warren Kasseberg, and, yeah, no, they got a bunch. Jack Kubik's going on, Warren Kasseberg. There's a bunch of people going on in '61.
I'll, I'll personally introduce you to those people.
Thank you, thank you. We have been in contact with the Darien Park District. Kate, our board member at large, I put her in charge of that, because I thought, maybe, you know what, maybe I just wasn't the right person. And when she did talk to them, because we wanted to do a bingo, they were, they were amenable. There was going to be a reduced charge and everything, but we found out with the bingo, we couldn't get a gambling license, because we had to be in existence for five years. We met all the other criteria, but we couldn't, we, so we, the bingo went out the window. But eventually, I even talked to Car, or Rob, I'm like, is there any way around that? And he's like, no, there's no way around that.
It's state law. It's state law.
Oh, that's the state law?
Yes.
Because we, we allowed you to go ahead and do it because of our, I approve that.
But they have to be a nonprofit, like she said, through the state for at least five years.
Yeah, the raffle, we were able to do the raffle.
That's what, I approve.
And we probably will end up doing that instead, until we get our five years under our belt. And then it'll be bingo every week. No, kidding. No. But other than that, again, Mr. Kenny, thank you so much. I mean.
Nancy, how many nights a week do you need space to rehearse?
We're looking at two, two nights a week. When we're looking at, like, when we're looking at the kids' show, two, two nights a week rehearsing, so we can do blocking and dance. And then I, one night a week is music, and that, they, they're at my house for that, you know, so, yeah.
I'll talk to you after. I may have an idea.
Okay, all right. I am going to have to leave. I, believe it or not, I got to go home to lessons. I'm like, you guys, I'll be back.
Thank you for coming in, Nancy.
But thank you so much for all of everything you've done. And Mr. Kenny, I'll be in touch with you as well as Mr. Marquesi, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let's move to the city clerks' report.
I have one item, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on April the 19th, in observance of Good Friday.
All right, the city administrators' report.
No report, Mayor.
Department heads, we have the monthly report, the police report. Chief Thomas, do you have any comments?
Uh, no. The last meeting of the city council, we talked about some of those items that are on there, about how well the notification on social media's been going, and we talked about the distracted driving for the month of April.
Well, I'll tell you, you made an impression. Mayor Trillo happened to be watching that, that meeting when you brought up the issue. And they've taken to heart the, the issue of how to communicate with their residents better. So that was, thank you for all the information that you have in this report.
Actually, his, when I met with him last week, he said they really have nothing like what we have. They have no way of getting their information out. They're looking to hire someone who could do all their social media.
Well, I gave him the name of our people.
Right.
And we do some things in-house, and I think that's, is that Lisa?
They don't do, they don't Twitter, they don't do Facebook.
Maria.
Mary Belmonte.
Yeah, Maria does a lot of the, of the website, along with the company, but the, the rest of the stuff, Mary Belmonte.
In fact, you said the problem that they have is that the Darien GABR has become the, the information source for Willbrook people, and his concern is it's misinformation. And.
That's why we got the blurb out on Direct Connect this past week, because we, we would love to know who is behind those two websites. The GABR and the community website, they are not ours. And they are, they are people that do not have the best interests of Darien at heart. Does anybody know who created those two websites?
No.
Somebody that obviously doesn't care for us.
Where did Dan go?
Yeah, some kind of a call he had to take.
So Frank, yeah, Frank picked my brain the other, right after the election about what we use, so that, because the only thing they use is Nixle right now.
Yeah, they're going to, he, he told me the other night they were going to hire somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, also, I mentioned Mary Belmonte, but we now do that also themselves, so.
They're connecting all those.
They'll send the tweets out, and they'll go right to Facebook, but they do that also.
That was a great idea, whoever came up with that.
And you know.
Alderman MacIver, can you do this?
And you know what? We're going to miss those ideas.
Oh, I can, I can shoot them from that location over there.
I don't have anything else.
Nothing else?
Yeah.
All righty. Move back to the agenda here. Dan had to take a phone call, so we'll, we'll have to save questions for municipal services for a later date. The treasurer's report. Treasurer Cor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval, warrant number 181924, the amount of $606,873.96 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended March 28th, in the amount of $255,653.18 for a total to be approved of $862,527.14.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marquesi.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The report, the warrant has been approved. Let's move to the monthly report.
Monthly report for the 11 months ended March 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $14,859,011, expenditures of $11,712,355, current balance of $4,351,606. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $7,912,425, expenses of $5,739,784, current balance of $3,203,266. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue $527,219, expenses of $533,261, current balance of $383,397. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue $3,463,694, expenses of $1,528,611, current balance of $2,49,127. And a capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of $253,268, expenses of $3,997,162, for a current balance of $5,378,153.
Any questions for the treasurer? Okay, then let's move on to the standing committee reports. Alderman Marquesi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a reminder, Municipal Services is meeting next Monday, April 22nd, at 6:30 in the council chambers.
Alderman MacIver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, the Darien Police Committee had a meeting, and the minutes from the January 21st, 2019, police committee were approved, so I'll pass those down. And the next meeting for the new Darien Police Committee will be, is scheduled for Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the police department training room, pending agenda items.
Now, that, that would require the mayor-elect to have made the selection of.
Oh, yes, by that date, correct.
Which one of the committees, so I don't know if the timing will be right.
Oh, good point.
I think your intentions are the next meeting, probably.
Yeah, we're going to have those appointments done for the May 6th, yeah.
I have the admin finance, if you want me to make the. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
The admin finance meeting, the next scheduled meeting is for Monday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM.
Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. Anyone in the audience have questions, comments, agenda-related? I'm holding back the crowds here. Okay. Let's move on to old business. And there being no old business, I'll move to the consent agenda. And there is no consent agenda this evening. I'll move to new business, and there is no new business this evening. So I'll move to the second to the last item, is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have anything?
I just wanted to mention to everyone, you all should have received, our auditors started their preliminary work for our year-end April 30th, and you should have all received a questionnaire by email from them in the last week or so. Please respond to that at your earliest convenience. I think they put a deadline. I think they put a deadline, May 15th or something on that, but I appreciate not having to chase you.
Was it Ann Hodling, or what, what was her name? No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, that's a different email.
It was the auditor, it was a...
It was another guy.
It was a guy.
Yeah, it was a guy. The only thing about it is...
But it says fraud in the, in the...
It's a fraud questionnaire.
I downloaded it, and I went in and I typed in my responses, and then I saved it, and then I emailed it back, but before I emailed it back, I opened it up to make sure, and where you would do a box, a check mark in the box, that didn't come out. The statements came out, but not the check marks, and I went back and did it again, saved it again, did the same thing, put it in an email. And so, when I sent it to him, I told him my answers for this question are no or yes or whatever, and, and if you need a hard copy, I said, I have a hard copy.
Kellen O'Malley is the person who sent it out.
So, outgoing people do it as well?
Yeah, they're sending it to the outgoing as well as the incoming and just hoping for the best response. Just gives them a little more thorough information so they can sort of use it to maybe concentrate some of their audit when they come out for final field work, which will be after the end of the fiscal year, probably the first week in June or so. Gives them some idea if there's some additional areas that they should be looking at or not.
Have you, have any, now, I received something from DuPage County electronically. Have you guys received?
Oh, I filed that.
I got it last week.
The ethics, the ethics.
The ethics, okay.
Yeah, I have three aldermen who have not responded, but there are others on committees. Two of the aldermen I spoke with this evening, so they are aware.
Yeah, because it's got to be done by May 1st.
Because there's a penalty from the county, but we also have the question, the ethics segment from the city, so.
Okay, there being no, if there's no other questions, comments and announcements from the audience? Okay.
Last time doing this.
This is it? Are you ready for it?
I'm going to fight it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman MacGyver, seconded by Alderman Kenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Turning to my...
That's a wrap.